Uh, we'd like to begin with a word of prayer and then uh join together in the pledge, so I invite you to stand with us. And we'll call on Commissioner Tommy McGehey to lead us in the prayer place.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and your love for us, Lord, and most of all, we thank you for the uh the sacrifice that your son Jesus Christ made to give us eternal life with you. Lord, we pray for each one that is represented here. We pray for the decisions that are made. Lord, we pray that we uh we act upon them and in the best of our ability and to the betterment of the county. Well, we thank you for your love for us and go with us today and guide us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
If you will join us in the pledge to the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We do want to welcome you here for our meeting. Appreciate your interest in the county's business and the commission's business. And uh, you know, we have a fairly short agenda. It may take a little longer than it looks on paper, but uh that's fine. We've got all morning, don't we? We have no scheduled public hearings or comments from citizens today, uh no awards or presentations. So we'll move right on to the public comment from elected or appointed officials and we'll ask Judge, do you have anything?
Not today.
All right, Ms. Patterson?
I'm okay, thank you.
All right, welcome to both of you. Thank you for being here. Uh, the sheriff's represented by Mr. Alan Siler. Alan, do y'all have anything during this section?
Okay.
We appreciate your attendance as well. Uh, the consent agenda commissioners, you received an email uh the minutes from the June fourteenth regular meeting. You had a chance to review those. We'll ask if there are any corrections, changes, if not, a motion to approve is in order.
Motion to approve.
All right. No, second. All right, anybody have anything you want to bring to our attention related to that? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same saying. All right, minutes are approved. Uh, we're carrying nothing forward under old business at this time, so we'll move right on to new business. This is kind of old business and new business. We are thrilled to have Nathan Rogers with us today. Nathan, if you will, come on up to the podium. Nathan is with uh Orgis, who is the builder of uh what we, I refer to as the Wing Solar Farm. Uh, and we're thrilled that you're here with us today. The company, uh, he's gonna just give us an update on where they are and then we're being asked to consider uh an amendment to the original abatement agreement. There've been some cost overruns, significant cost overruns, and at a certain point of of change, we have to go back and reconsider. So we're just being asked to consider applying the same abatement to a higher dollar amount, so welcome.
Very good. Thank you so much Chairman White and uh Commissioners, good morning. It's uh members of the public. Good to be here in C- in Covington County. Um, it's been, you know, we like to joke, we call the solar industry the solar coaster, and even during good times, it's, it is that. And uh, but the the turns have been, the twists and turns have been steeper and faster, a- and the drops have been more stomach churning than certainly any time in uh in the ten years that I've been in the industry. There's, there's never before has there been so much opportunity mixed with an equal amount of of challenges to go along with it. But uh nonetheless, the Wing project is is moving full speed ahead. They've been clearing trees and doing construction surveying and staking and and putting in civil erosion control implements. And I think probably sometime around the uh after the Fourth of July, they'll be uh putting the posts in the ground. And they won't even finish with the post before the panels will start coming in and and those will start being wired up. So I think probably towards the end of the summer, there'll be uh, there'll be something, something to look at if anyone happens to be uh happens to be driving by. And we anticipate having the project online and and putting electrons into the grid by the end of the year. Uh, the good Lord willing and the crick don't rise, as they say, if the weather, if weather holds out, so. But yeah, there have been uh, as everyone know, costs of pretty much everything i- in the entire world, around the world have gone up and and the solar industry is by no means immune to that. Uh, you know, our business is, we deal with a lot of steel, uh with a lot of commodities, solar panels themselves, which are kind of used to, technically a commodity business. But now because of uh both raw materials costs and also kind of, you know, tariffs and political implications have become a, have become a very hot commodity, we'll say. So uh as you saw, our costs went up significantly from, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of of eighty million in estimated capital expenditures to somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred twenty-four million in estimated capital expenditures. Uh, but instead of canceling the project, like a lot of the projects around the country uh have been, we are are moving forward with it because we have a a relationship with Power South that we want to deepen. We have a relationship with here with Covington County with a couple of early-stage projects that we're looking at in the county. And so we want to uh make good on our commitment to deliver that that project to Power South and its ratepayers and and to the citizens of of Southern Alabama. So, so here we are. Um, I know that you had had a question about jobs and I have uh the contact information for two of the recruiters at Wanzek, which is our lead uh EPC, engineering procurement construction firm. And I will, I will, I think maybe just pass their information along to you and then you can forward it. I'm sure, not sure how how it's kind of best.
So, so you mentioned completing the project by year end, so we're only looking at a six-month window for construction jobs, is that right?
For construction jobs, that's, that's correct. Th- though, that's correct. Though, like I said, we do have a couple of projects in the works, but the, in, that we hope to bring to fruition in Covington County, but those are, you know, a few years out. So if construction, there's construction jobs, relatively short window, you know.
Oh, and thus far, you really don't have construction folks on on the ground. It looks like clearing, land clearing.
Yeah, cor- correct. Thus far, it's been, it's been land clearing and and civil uh and and civil works. It took kind of a long time for us to get to the point of actually, you know, pulling the trigger on the actual uh construction part of the projects, because everything, you know, everything has been a, it's just a moving target continuously.
Well, does anybody have jo- uh questions for Nathan? Comments? Uh, why are you, why are you there? Let's uh, he mentioned that the estimates of cost on the projects have risen from around eighty million to a little in excess of a hundred and twenty million. And uh, we have granted abatements two years ago, basically, on on this project. Uh, you know, this is gonna generate a boatload of education taxes because we can't abate those. And uh, so through the construction, uh, you know, there's, there are sales taxes and then there are uh adblock taxes on on the project itself. And so it's about a twenty-year abatement window that we have committed to, but because of the amount of the change and the investment, um, state law requires us to come back and and agree with an amendment to the, to the initial abatement agreement. So uh, with that in mind, anybody have questions on it? Or I would entertain a motion to enter the uh, to approve the First Amendment to the tax abatement, abatement agreement. Again, it's no change in the terms other than the dollar amount that was being used for the calculations.
I'll make a motion on, it is something I think that, like you said, they're committed, spending another, basically fifty million to get that in this county. You know, I know it's gonna create a lot of jobs, but will for a short period of time and everything, and and it does benefit another business in this county, so.
It does, and it, and as I mentioned, it's gonna generate quite a bit of self, of uh tax revenue for our education systems, so.
And I like to say that that, you know, each, each solar project individually does not necessarily create a lot of construction jobs, but in the aggregate, it it turns into an industry for the state and and that leads to, you know, jobs, ancillary jobs, not just jobs in building solar farms, but in maintaining them, operating them, providing parts for them. Um, and and so over time, it can flourish into a, you know, a not insignificant portion of of the overall state's economy.
Absolutely. Uh, we've been watching work on South Bypass here in Andalusia that the utility company is doing. And it may or may not be directly related to this. It seems to me there's a connect, a correlation. So that's put several jobs here already uh away from your project specifically. So we have a motion to uh approve the amendment to the tax abatement agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, questions, comments?
Uh, other than the fact that it does show that we're open to these changes, you know, to the solar stuff and, you know, things that that type of energies that would might make us more attractive to other industries that might want to come this way. You know, might, maybe this would lead to some, something that would attract some, some other kind of something forward.
Absolutely.
Say that they are, do have people that's willing to work to try to change some things, make.
All right, any others? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same saying. All right, that's approved. Uh, we appreciate you being here today. So where's home for you?
Home is Miami Beach, Florida. Uh, Orgis is based out of Miami.
Right.
So, but I was talking with uh Mr. Patterson over there. He was, he was suggesting that uh perhaps consider Covington County. And I was mentioning, I have two nine-month-old uh twin infants at home and and I've been, I've been doing this work for ten years now and I spend a lot of time in places like this. And every day I'm like, hmm, maybe, maybe, maybe a more rural, quiet life is is uh, is a, is a good idea, so.
Not a bad thing. Uh, we'll look for you to be moving here soon.
It'll be a culture clash if you come up here from Miami.
Say, I'm sorry, say again?
It would be a culture clash from Miami to here.
Well, I moved.
But we love it.
Yeah, I, I've, I, I moved from, from t- to Miami from California and from California to California from Texas, so, so I'm, I'm familiar with culture clashes, so it wouldn't be the first one, but.
I looked around the room, as you said Miami, and everybody in here is going, mm.
Well, at least I didn't say San Francisco, because then, then I would've gotten rotten tomatoes, right?
All right, well, we appreciate you attending today and good luck on the project and we look forward to ribbon cutting or something here in six or eight months.
Ab- absolutely. Stay tuned and I will forward you that, uh, the recruiter contact information. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chairman. Take care.
All right, thank, thank you Commissioners uh for action on that. Next item on our agenda is uh significant for our county, and that is consider a renewal of employment contract. It refers to two, but one of those actually jumped the gun. It's a year from now, so we'll, we'll pass on, we'll hold off on the second one. But the employment contract under consideration is for Mr. Lynn Rawls, our county engineer, so it is vitally important to our county. Lynn, you do a great job speaking for the commission as a whole. We appreciate what you and your uh, your team over at the uh Roden Bridge Department do. So uh, it's, I think it's an honor to consider this and take action on it, we hope. Uh, Commissioners, I had uh sent a proposal to y'all and I'll restate that in abbreviated form that we consider uh is, what, what we've been operating under is a three-year contract with options to renew. And so this is a proposal that we roll things forward on a three-year term with exactly the same terms as we currently are operating under Lynn. With this exception, I propose that we adjust uh, give a two-point-six-five percent adjustment in pay now. And then, of course, this cost of living and other things come along over the next three years. Those, he would get those uh as he has been historically, so uh. What are, what are your wishes on that?
I'll make a motion to accept the contract as written.
Okay, second. So we have a motion and second to uh renew the contract three years and uh adjust the pay as, as proposed.
People have to think we're the fourth biggest infrastructure in the state that Lynn actually helps take care of, you know.
Of all the counties, that's correct. I think fourth and uh, right now our pay is below that level as far as compare, comparison to other engineers, county engineers. Uh, that's a good, good point.
You know, I'd, I'd like to say that, I know we all catch a lot of flack for road conditions and that kind of thing, but I never called Lynn Rawls, he doesn't return my call and uh, and, and that means a lot to a commissioner because we can't always go do what's got to be done right then. But Lynn, I do appreciate you and and your group's work and work at it.
And I feel, feel lucky that he's really never just said no, you know, to a commissioner when we ask him to, to do something for the citizens in our districts.
Well, you know, uh, one thing that I thought about is uh, you know, three or four years ago, we didn't have rebuild Alabama money. Now all of a sudden, you're dealing with the same stuff you were dealing with previously, plus uh seven-hundred-and-fifty, eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar worth of new projects every year that you wouldn't have had. And so there's been no change in compensation or manpower or equipment to, in order to do those, so. Uh, they are doubling down on the work, so, and I think it's evident, a lot of good things going on for us.
Well, I'll, you know, go back to, to the grants and things that they, the department goes and hunts and gets. And yeah, they're out there, but they have to go get them and there's a lot of time-consuming things and they have to make sure that their plans are drawn and and another thing, when we have, does it, you know, what we call disasters or natural disasters, floods or whatever. And Covington County is usually one of the first counties that come to, and they may be several counties affected, but they know. And I've been told several times by these people coming in, by the, and they say, we can come here and it's, it's simple. It's everything's already done, worked up, and all we gotta do is look at it and we know the work's gonna be done. It's something that's not, you know, they're just gonna get some money and not put with. He said, we know that money's gonna be spent and made better actually than what we expected it to be. So that's a, that's a positive when you got the whole state of Alabama, sometimes it's affected, and we wanted the first ones to get, so we can get our money, get going, you know. So I, I can say that means a lot too, not just as, you know, just other things that goes on, but being recognized as a county that's, is very punctual in what they do.
All right, I think everybody's had a say. We have a motion and second. If there's nothing else, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same saying. So Lynn, you're stuck for three more years. Can't get off the hood. Thank you. We do appreciate you. Uh, next item on the agenda is consider a retroactive approval for emergency purchase of tires for the maintenance department. Page six in your packet shows the details on that. Kevin, anything we need to know or is just um?
That tire repairer was on state bids and I had to have it for a period.
So we're gonna approve a one-hundred-and-three-dollar-and-ninety-eight-cent purchase, it looks like. Is that right?
Yes.
Anybody opposed to that? We'll entertain a motion to approve it now.
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion, second from Tony. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same saying. All right, that's approved. Thank y'all. And next, we, we're gonna hit a run of things rela- related to the sheriff's department and uh Mr. Alan Siler's here. Speak on behalf of the sheriff and answer questions if we need to. We'll, we'll just try to stumble through these and we'll call on you, Alan, if, if we hit a snag. First item is consider purchase of equipment for the sheriff's department. Page seven in your packet has a, a list of those things there. Uh, you know, we've approved purchase of several vehicles. Those vehicles have, as you know, uh, light bars, sirens and other equipment installed on them. So we, we ordered the vehicles, we've ordered this equipment. This equipment is sitting here. Vehicles are being delayed, as you might expect, because of their worldwide economy and who knows what other things are going on. But uh, but the local vendor that had this order is uh, has this equipment in, so the proposal is that we go ahead and purchase these. He'll hold them in inventory to install whenever we have vehicles to put it on, maybe six or eight months from now, but, or longer.
Be nice with your purchase.
So um, again, this, this was basically factored into the awards and bids earlier, so is there a motion to approve this purchase?
Motion to approve.
It's a total of sixteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, forty-eight cents, it appears. Uh, unle- or is that multiple times that?
No, that's, that's a pre-bid.
That's the total. Okay, okay. All right, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second. Questions for Alan? All in favor say aye.
Yeah.
Opposed, same saying. All right, that's approved.
I did have a question. What, are these going on the pickup trucks or?
That was already put pickup trucks there on chip shoulders, so we have moved to each holder. They were, came out here quick.
Okay. So when the pickups come in, then this will be, okay, gotcha.
Page eight, you see uh, uh, description of a vehicle, two thousand eight Ford Crown Vic. And there's the serial number, if you want to read that, we can. It's being used by courthouse security. Now, we earlier declared it surplus, meaning that we're not auctioning at all, but they have found a used Ford and put it back into operation and they would like for us to de-surplus it. So is there a motion to uh put this back in the active fleet?
I think if it's working for them, it's better than hunting something else.
Yeah.
Um, I'll make a motion to put it back.
All right, motion, second. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same saying. All right, good. And next is uh consider approval for out-of-state travel for sheriff's department. Uh, about five pages of details here. We, we, just a reminder for those that may not know, we approve any out-of-state travel for our employees, our elected officials that we're gonna incur costs on. Uh, and it's, sometimes it's distant Florida, ninety miles away, but if it crosses the state line, we feel like it's appropriate to communicate that so the public is aware. Uh, this is a, a program for one officer. Is that right, Alan?
One investigator from the John Advocacy Center, right?
And if I underst- if I remember right, there's very little cost we're incurring, other than like John Advocacy is paying some, most of the cost of the class.
Yes, it won't be in, it's just what yours is for.
Except transportation, or are they covering that?
Yes, correct.
We have transportation, okay. But still, it crosses the state line, so is there a motion to approve this uh out-of-state travel?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's motion, second. No questions for Alan? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same saying. All right, that's taken care of. Uh, Lynn, we're gonna talk about bids in the engineers department. You wanna come up and help us, walk us through that? Hot mix and Batumis surface.
I've mentioned uh at the last meeting that the uh, we received notification, they were not gonna renew the uh, the bid. Uh, they had to give us the thirty-day notice on that and then, and we're just at that point, ready to go and solicit bids for our annual bid for asphalt and our chip seal. Uh, this allows us to call at a moment's notice and get a, a P O. number and and issue work for anything that we may have open and ready to go, so.
Do you think they'll give you a, a bid at a twelve-month propos- uh price, or do you think they'll put a factor of?
It could be a six, it could be a s- six-month. You know, things are, again, you heard, you know, price keeps going up and our liquid index have not checked lately, but uh, it's gotta be high considering that the, the cost is more than doubled uh since the contract was awarded.
Are you inviting a twelve-month proposal?
We're gonna try a twelve-month, yes. That's how they normally are, a twelve-month period, yes.
But some people may say, I'll submit you a ninety-day bid or whatever, you just.
Steel, m- most are, are steel bids, they only, we, we can't go more than six months on steel.
Okay.
They just won't, uh, they won't do it.
So you're factoring that into your bid, your.
I'm gonna get our, I get a feel, but I feel we can probably get a year, uh, annual, a year out of it, yes.
If you go a year, the other problem is they're gonna have to bid pretty high to hedge against inflation, so a shorter term might work to our advantage a little bit, but who knows? All right, we need a, is there a motion to uh approve solicitation of bids for the hot mix and the chip seal department?
Make a motion.
Motion, second. Questions, believe. Thoughts? You mentioned something that was good. Lynn, do you think it'd be best to try to get a year or six months, or just?
We'll try it both ways. I mean, I, we, I can put that option down. I can get them to give them a six-month price and then maybe a, a, a year price.
I, I think I will.
I don't know that they'll go over six. I don't see them going six. I, three would be a max, probably.
But it is tied to a liquid index now. It is tied to a, there's a base index price.
A price and an inflation adjustment in the only index.
Yes, there is a liquid price, which that's all asphalt is. Your aggregate is, is, is pretty much the same, but there's nothing to account for fuel and and the expense for mining the material, but as far as your liquid asphalt, there is a, a, a index tied to that. So if we bid a base bid next month, that'll become a new base bid. And I've seen it both times where we've actually pa- they had to pay them extra and we actually got a d- deduction and then, and then passed, because liquid asphalt has
Okay.
uh decreased. So uh, um, but it can be, it fairly expensive. It can be much as ten, fifteen dollars a ton additional just because of the index uh for some months, so.
So did I get a motion on that? I think I did. Motion and second. Any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same saying. All right, that's approved, Lynn. Next item, it looks like, is uh consider surplus for the engineers department. Let me just tell you, watch out the sheriff's office again. So be careful. Tri-axle dumps, but uh tandem dump, single-axle ups, so.
We got a list. I might go real quick. We're, we need to surplus the uh, I got two thousand three uh Mack dump truck needs to be uh surplus. I got uh thr- uh three, well, I got an international freightliner and a GMC um tandem axle, uh little small dump trucks. I need to uh surplus. And I've got uh seven uh motor graders. These are motor graders we purchased in early spring of this year, which we knew was temporary. We have, I got a call yesterday, uh, three of the graders should arrive between August the fifteenth and the twenty-second. And I wanna uh, um, surplus these and and put them in the, in the woods, Jamwood Auction in Montgomery. And uh, three of the graders I would like that we have purchased right now. I'd like to send them up for the August twelfth. Uh, we need them by August twelfth at Wood Auction to, to get them in the auction there. But anticipated, the cap uh rep told us yesterday, the August fifteenth to twenty-second, we should be getting at least three of those, those new lease graders.
But you're gonna sell, how many, you're gonna deliver, how many of these right now?
Surplus seven. I'm gonna keep one for our, our construction crews for, for new construction. Um, but I will go ahead and probably go and send three up um for this, this next auction.
So we're declaring them surplus effective some future date, not today?
Let's do it. I can just surplus them now. I go in, I just send go and surplus them now.
But you'll only send them up to the Jamwood as you get the other ones in?
As, as, as to get the other ones in, yeah. When it says the anticipated delivery of the other ones, yes.
Do they think the other three will be within the year?
Could be. I mean, he just mentioned those, those, those first three, which, you know, we, we plan on keeping these leased till the end of the year. We wouldn't expect it exactly when we're gonna get these new lease graders.
So just to clarify, you're only gonna release these, we're gonna declare them surplus as new ones arrive.
That's correct, that's correct.
You're gonna keep them in the active fleet?
Oh, yes.
Until the new ones get here and then you will sell them in the next immediate sale.
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to declare seven graders uh as, as listed, plus the dump trucks?
And the Pro-Mac cutter head as well.
And the cutter head, surplus for, for disposal through auction, like he just said. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second. You think the, is the uh auction market pretty strong still?
I, I think we can hopefully get our, our money back out of those.
Good, yeah, okay.
Even with the.
How would that work? When would be the, like, you know, the, these auctions, they gonna have them pretty often, right, now?
Well, if you got one now and you got one in the fall, I'm gonna have the one, yeah, there's two, basically two a year, three a year. There's, there's three typically.
Seems like we having them a little more than they would, because it seems like the market has gotten better for them.
But the market's still pretty strong. Even with their commission, I still think we're gonna probably, it's, it's a break-even. And even run the machines as long as we've already run them uh so far since third of spring, so. Most of these machines had about thirty-five-hundred, four-thousand hours on them, so they're still good quality machines that they're, that were, that we, that we bought.
I don't know if we had really issues out of them.
No, have not.
Okay, we have a motion and second to uh declare the list, listed items surplus subject to uh replacement item, uh equipment coming in, and that's the way we'll sell them. If there's nothing else, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same saying. All right, that's approved. Lynn, you wanna give us a report since you're at the microphone?
Yes, um, we're working on uh part of our rebuild uh county transportation plan, substation road. Uh, we've, we're working on the four-thousand-foot of it from US eighty-four to Reeves Road. Um, hoping about a week we'll have that thing basically dis-upgrade to hopefully put base on that road. Um, County Road one oh seven, we got the first sixteen-hundred-foot um on the one oh seven and uh cleared and grubbed. And we'll start moving dirt, I start moving dirt, maybe start laying some pipe on that section over the next two weeks. On that section of road, so that, that project's come along pretty good, good dry weather. We're getting a lot of dump, a lot done up there. Um, our County Road uh, um, Fifty-Nine Point Road, which is part of our transportation plan also. Um, we got all our pipes replaced over the last two or three weeks. We're looking at starting of the uh leveling of that project and over the next two weeks. And after that, the resurfacing with a surface treatment on that road as well. So that project's come along. Strong School Road, which is part of our transportation plan as well. We're looking at doing pipe replacements probably next week, start replacing the pipes on that road. And that'll follow suit behind uh Point Road as well on, on that end. Um, I'm working on a preliminary engineering right now on W. Coleman Road, which is another part of that. And we're also working on the Murray Cross Road, uh, the design of that road, uh alignments and right-of-way uh for that road as well. And landowners paying, or the homeowner association of Highway Harbors having uh the materials paid for that project out there, that you owe dues and fees. So they're coming up the money to, to pay those roads. Um, also, uh, um, just a quick note, our R C N D Council is accepting um a grant applications, deadline is this Thursday for that. Um, you can go to wiregrassrcd.com uh for that to make any uh, a grant application you like. It's, it's an easy place to go. It's all, all to fill on the uh, the website and you can submit it right there with a few pictures and a brief description of your project. Um, and we generally, I think in the fall, we generally uh award those uh, those projects, ones that would get awarded for that, so. And just a quick rundown before, you know, we had the, the Wing uh community here at the last commission meeting to discuss uh traffic counts uh and looking at maybe a, a study for all that. Uh, we've reached out to the, I've, I've spoke locally with our D O T. here. And we've also spoke uh recently with our, our Troy. Uh, to the, I've I've spoke locally with our D O T here, um, we've also spoke uh, regionally with our our Troy region. And I've already gotten prices, uh, the girl didn't send it to me this morning, but. Tana River Falls has these counters or these these billboards to show your your actual speed, uh, those, uh, the one that we're looking at other than than just the uh, um. Uh, this one be actually a solar one, this one they have is a battery operated one, that's about thirty one hundred dollars a piece for those type units. And I'm and I'm waiting from the Georgia to get at with the actual solar cost, I I figure it's probably about four thousand dollars. Uh, for those each, and I would not mind personally, um, the county actually just purchase those ourselves and actually put these up, we get phone calls all the time about speeding on on county roads. And that would be a good deterrent to help maybe shine a light on 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 speeders.
Should be, should be good on some constru- constructions.
And they're portable, they're portable, it doesn't take much to set them up, so I'll I'll, once I get a a good price. And they're approved, cause if we do set them up down there, there's a a permit process to the state to do that, um. But we spoke with uh, I'll just give you a quick rundown, we did pull uh, volumes, I was able to get some some numbers, um, um. Uh, October one, and this uh, station is between uh, Beta Church and Bogan Level Road. Um, it's roughly forty two hundred cars a day in October, uh, and I'll give you the the email that. Uh, and give the description what the D O T said that they could, they could do for us, um. And this is a a gentleman there, um, out of the the D O T office. And we have requested maybe some traffic counts, but this is what he told us, he said, we're unable to provide you with historical data for the stations. For the time periods indicated below, cause we're looking more for Memorial Day to Labor Day timeframe, which is most of your summer uh, peak traffic. Um, these stations are portable sites that are only counted on annual basis, uh, for a hundred sixty eight consecutive of hours each during normal traffic patterns. Uh, we do not collect data uh, during holidays or special events to the normal traffic patterns and and counts during these times. Our traffic counts are collected so that we can properly determine uh, an average daily traffic count for all roadway segments within the state. We utilize our permanent stations on summer roadways, if there are none on the current roadway, to analyze the the traffic data uh, for these portable sites. Um, he and he's responded to our request, he said, this request is for a roadway project utilizing state funds, uh, you will need to request these counts through our local transportation bureau. Uh, if the traffic uh, request is not for a project, you can either collect them yourselves, which would we would do. Um, or establish a special work authorization uh, project through our doc to collect those, to collect them. Um, unfortunately, we're unable to collect special accounts trafficked for counties unless they are tied to a state funded project. Um, or funded through an S W A, uh, providing us with a a funding source to charge employee time and equipment usage to. What they did, they did state this, we do have plans in the works to place a permanent station for the Segway Cut Box Station, uh, five twenty nine, which is between Beta. And uh, Bogan Level, but it may be a year or so before we can get it installed, so they're looking at putting a permanent traffic counter. Although that should cut in Luke, will send the roads like you see in a lot of places, and they'll actually um, have it permanent, um, that they can actually pull at any time.
So the the traffic counter, doesn't it also have the ability to give you average speed?
It gives you the speed of every vehicle.
Okay, and and I think what I'd ask him is if we could get the speed and then put the uh, radar signs in place. And then measure the speed afterward, see how effective or ineffective they are, yeah, I think everybody seemed to think that was a an easy thing to do and would be effective, but we'll find out. So that's what we're hoping for.
But now, Eric and I are working on our, we have, we have a license agreement with our 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 traffic counters, it's a single little small traffic counter, it's a very good piece of equipment that we use. But uh, because of our, um, we decommissioned the computer that was on, but it had a license uh, tied to that and they're wanting us to go back and. Unlicense the the uh, the software, I can't do that, so it's already been decommissioned and destroyed. And I have a little run around with the company that sold us that, but I'm, we're working, trying to work through that, hope to get back the guy today. To maybe we can get our traffic counter down there and that's do our our own traffic count to get some speeds and and everything, so.
I reached out on behalf of the commission to the governor's office to see if she might have uh, a pot of uh, overtime money. A little grant that she could provide to help with overtime funding, sheriff said he would be glad to put the officers there. So hopefully, hopefully we'll get some, I thi- I think it's important that folks that came to visit us last meeting understand that we take it seriously and certainly safety is. It's something that we're gonna always respond to quickly and hopefully effectively, so thank you Lynn for what you're doing.
I have a question for Lynn, you've mentioned the uh, the radar, the solar radar, um, sign things. You said you'd probably get a couple of extra would would come in handy, check and see if there's a price break for quantity, you know?
Yeah, there there is, there is.
Okay.
She's supposed, I I was hoping to have it, I talked to her yesterday to get the price, uh, Kyle actually sent me the one they they had bought from, uh.
Now that one in River Falls does have a solar panel.
Yeah, it's, that's kinda heavy, that they they've upgraded the models, it's not as bad to carry around.
You'd said it was battery operated.
Yeah, hit there, there's a, there are battery operated ones.
With a solar panel.
Yeah. But you know, with the D O T with right of way, you gotta worry about breakaway, you gotta, there's a lot of things you gotta be concerned with and there's a right so for accidents that they hit. Hit one of these counters or or um, radar detectors, so there's, there's a process to go through.
Sounds like you could purchase those uh, at the estimate of cost uh, within the within the current bid law.
Yes, and they're on the state bid, they're they're actually on the state bid, I've already got, she said they're on the state bid.
I would love for us to approve a purchase of two or three units, how many do you want, how many do you think?
Well, I'd like to get them both, whatever we do, I'd like to put them in east, east, northbound, southbound, eastbound or westbound directions, on one road, that way everybody's. Cause if you're going just one direction, um, you you're missing half the traffic, so I'd I'd like to put two up on on the same road.
If we get a price break on five, I mean, I'm sure there's other places in the county that are having issues with.
But it happens everywhere, I get, I get, I got a phone call yesterday about dirt road speeding yesterday.
Well, to uh, to speed that process, I'm not waiting another two or three weeks, I would love to approve, go ahead and purchase three to five, uh, the estimate you mentioned.
Okay.
Uh, based on the price. What about those? Let's do it with a motion in second though, so we can go ahead and order it, I make a motion and we go ahead and approve the.
Okay.
Purchase, give give us a heads up on, hey, we can get this price for five, this price for three or whatever.
The flashing stop signs and the flashing stop ahead signs, and you get any prices on them or what?
They're twelve to eighteen hundred dollars, uh, we've, I think we've talked to town of uh, Babbie, they're looking maybe putting some up.
Babbie's looking at, you know, we talked about up on County Road seventy where they're going through the intersection there and not stopping.
If we put the rumble strips there, that's helped, I think, quite a bit there on that intersection, so.
I know some over in Andalusia, yeah, we can borrow those. So we have a motion in second to go ahead and approve the uh, ordering of those units depending on your price break and stuff, do you have other questions, comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same say, all right, so that, thank you Lynn. Uh, Kevin, we're gonna talk about the air conditioning unit, you you mentioned that the Covenant County Health Department had a unit go out and you. You have a, you you got quotes, not a formal bid, but you was, did you bid it, okay?
We sent the bid out, we were um, sent out to, how many did we send to Rachel, ten, probably ten or twelve con- local uh, air conditioner contractors? And um, we only received two back, uh, from Walker and from uh, Rogers Refrigeration.
Low bid was Rogers at eighty five hundred thirty nine dollars, that's installed?
Yes, sir, complete.
So we need uh, to consider approving awarding this to the low bidder.
I make a motion. Second.
Motion in second, we want folks down in the health department to be comfortable, it's a little more so than they have it, it's tough the last few weeks. Questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same say. I'll just mention, Kevin, Kevin wants us to look at uh, uh, an overall replacement in that building, there are five more units, I think he said.
There are five more, they're twenty eight years old, they're they're inefficient and they've, they're way uh, past their life.
That's played a useful life, yes. So we'll look at that probably for the next meeting, maybe we'll look at how we.
And and I I did some calculations for, I believe you and Michael asked me about some air conditioning units and I. Looked at them overall, we've got a lot of air conditioning units over twenty years old. And I mentioned this in the last meeting, I think, but I would love to consider, just something for y'all to think about, to consider replacing all of them that are over fifteen or twenty years old. Because of the way we're having to bid them now, it's it's not considered an emergency if an air conditioner goes out. So so we have to bid, which takes weeks.
To me Kevin are so more, much more efficient now.
They are more efficient, it's gonna save energy, um, yeah, it's not gonna pay for itself, probably not, like like L E D lights do. L E D lights pay for theirself, um, air conditioners probably have a hard time paying for itself because it's warranted for five years and it's extremely expensive and the way everything's going up. As we've heard in every situation, uh, air conditioner units are no different, they're going up drastically. Um, and and I'll tell you this, uh, talking to both of those contractors, they estimate uh, another increase within the next six months. Uh, they don't know if it's, if it'll be five percent, you know, or eight percent or ten percent, but they estimate another increase in the next six months. So I I.
I think that, I just mentioned to Greg, I think that's something, we can actually use our our ARPA funds, our COVID funds for.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, we need to, we need to start moving forward on those ARPA funds and get some of these projects underway, especially with these H T A C units and the boilers over there.
Does anybody oppose uh, declaring that this this one, this that we just awarded be covered through ARPA funds, I don't know, we have to put it in here, but if there's no opposition, we'll just make that part of the motion in second. And uh, Karen did have conversation this week, uh, with the with our, the folks coordinating our our projects. And uh, the next step is to uh, retain architects and or engineers to help spec the things and move forward, so we'll we'll. She's moving that along right now, so hopefully we'll see some activity on that in the next thirty days.
While we have Kevin up here, will you go ahead and I I think we had mentioned before, I don't know if it was in the meeting collectively among us, but about the need for a lift. A man lift or something, something that I think, you know, Lynn could probably.
Yeah, um, I need to, I need to talk to Lynn and find out, w- we desperately need a lift of some sort, I I believe a lull. Would cover probably ninety five percent of the activities we do, um, at the at the jail and at the arena. Uh, the lights that are up high, there's fans at the arena that are up high, there's roofing at the arena that's very high. Uh, insulation, there's so many uses for it that that we could use, um, and most of that, a lull is sufficient, but a lull doesn't articulate. Um, I I ideal thing is about an eighty foot lift, which would be, have to be moved with a low boy, because you can't really drive. A lull you could drive between these buildings that are fairly close together, which is a benefit of having the lull. Um, there may be an instance in the future, uh, there's ten gas heaters at the arena that are up very high, there's forty lights at the arena that are up very high. Um, and then not including the jail, the courthouse with with lights and things up high, um, you could use it for so many things, pressure washing the courthouse, cleaning the windows. Uh, so many uses, um, we could, we really need, we've borrowed them before, we've rented them before. Um, we have one bucket truck, the engineer department has a bucket truck, we've used it numerous times, we used it last week at the arena twice. Uh, it's okay, but it's a one man bucket truck, it's very hard to be efficient up there working on heavy fan motors and stuff with one man in a bucket. Uh, you need a, you need a larger bucket, the lift we had had a two man bucket that we had in there for a little while, which is very convenient. But we we do, we need one and I'll be glad to do some, I talked to Lynn, maybe maybe look and see what kind of uh, monies it's gonna cost.
Right.
And maybe, I think you mentioned putting it in next year's budget, trying to to purchase something like that.
I agree, a lull is 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 the way to go, like I said, panels probably ninety five percent, we need a scissor lift. That's that's more for flat ground and everything, but a a log is is a fork lift, we can use it as a fork lift, lift and everything, so.
I I've got panels right now that need to go on the roof of the arena that I'll have to borrow a lull to get them up there.
We haven't had good luck in borrowing a lift at the arena before.
You can uh, once all work that out amongst yourselves and and.
We'll we'll discuss it and find out what he needs and what my needs are, cause the difference is just gonna be the extension of it and the ability and the weight.
All right, um, I don't think we have to wait necessarily till the next budget, we could get that in this year if you find, find what you need and. Have uh, opportunity to pick it up.
Okay.
All right, thank you Kevin. Uh. Kevin, we didn't consider a contract for you, Kevin's a. Yeah, uh, well, he's a merit employee, but I would tell you that we appreciate the good work that you and your team do as well, we're very fortunate, uh.
We don't see it as much as like the other people that our offices that he goes in and works for, like the health department and other places. And USD building, they tell us how all the time, how efficient, how well they work, you know, things get taken care of, so.
Absolutely, all right.
District county, but everybody else.
But we're at the place on the agenda for reports from staff, back row, have anything you wanna bring? All right, uh, Ms. Attorney, do you have anything, commissioners, what do y'all have? Well, if there is nothing else, we will uh, move to adjournment, if there's no opposition, we stand adjourned, thank you.